The most common time that you can help somebody is when they're down. And there are a lot of people that are down because they're at the end roads and they don't know where to turn. That when people come into any of our branch locations, that you outreach your arms and you help them. And you see what their problems are. I think that's what we brought to this industry, I think that's what we brought to this community, that we try to outreach to the people that need us the most, and we're here to help serve them.
Good evening. Can you hear me? Today is May 1st, 2014. And this is the 2014 Annual Town Meeting of the Town of Spencer. My name is Peter Adams. I'm your town moderator. I am advised that we have a quorum, and I call the meeting to order, waiving the reading and return of the warrant and noting for the record that it has been served as required by law. For those of you who are willing and able, please rise and join your fellow town meeting members in the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence and our national anthem. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. May we all have a moment of silence for all of those Spencer residents, friends and family who have passed in the past year, and those who once filled our days and now live in our memories. Thank you. I call on Jim Pervier, Charlton Police Chief and Spencer residents, to lead us in the national anthem.
Oh, Jose, can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Those broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? Oh, the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say does that star-spangled banner yet wave o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Thank you, chief. Tonight, we will make history in the conduct of our normal affairs as we exercise our right of self-determination to set the affairs of our government by consensus as a free and equal people in this, the 261st year of our existence as a body politic. Every day we make history, conducting our lives in the best interest of ourselves, our families, and our society. In hindsight, future generations may or may not deem what we do here tonight as momentous or noteworthy, but momentous or not, the ordinary affairs of our lives will become the history for our descendants. 173 years ago on this date, 58 people did something very ordinary. They moved their families to new homes, and in so doing changed the history of this country. Packing 2,500 pounds of supplies and belongings on a four-by-10-foot hardwood wagon drawn by three teams of oxen and capped by a canvas-covered hickory frame, these common people set off on a 2,000-mile walk from Independence, Missouri, through the jolting wilderness to California and Oregon. Before the end of the 1800s, more than 200,000 farmers, artisans, and their families and fortune seekers followed in their footsteps, repeating what were then ordinary acts but which today are seen as historic feats of courage and perseverance. And parenthetically, for those of you who complain about luggage and packing for the four-hour jet flight today to cover the same distance, consider that this journey took five months, averaging 15 to 20 miles a day, and the basic staples alone which needed to be packed on these wagons included 600 pounds of flour, 120 pounds of biscuits, 400 pounds of bacon, 60 pounds of coffee, 4 pounds of tea, 100 pounds of sugar, and 200 pounds of lard. We give thanks tonight to the Spencer Cable Access for their continued support of your right to know through telecast of governmental meetings. I would also like to thank all those people who are here tonight and not here tonight who are moving on in new endeavors in their lives after years of service to the town, especially to Senator Stephen Brewer, Select Board Member Donnie Berthium Jr., and Treasurer/Collector Mary Barrow. Know one and all that you have the gratitude and best wishes of all of our residents. On the stage here tonight, to my right is the Select Board. Gary Woodbury is the chair. Donnie Berthium is the vice chair. John Stevens on the end is the clerk. Tony Pepe, who is not here tonight, is a member. And Beau Fritz is a member. In the back, Adam Gardett, the town administrator, and the town council, Stanley Weinberg. Finance Committee is seated to my right, and Mary Brainey is the chair, and she will please introduce the members.
And before I introduce the members, I'd like to thank all of you also for coming out tonight to participate in this most important form of town government. And I want to thank all of you who have attended so many of the Board of Selectmen's meetings, Finance Committee meetings, School Committee meetings over the last several months as well, so that you come tonight informed. And finally, I want to recognize the Finance Committee members and thank them. They bring 11 different perspectives. They ask incisive questions and strive to represent the best interests of you, the citizens of Spencer. And finally, I want to thank Adam Gardett. His job is a difficult one, yet he is unfailingly even-tempered and never ceases to amaze with his knowledge of fiscal town matters and his creativity in presenting solutions to our dire fiscal problems. To my immediate left is Paul McLaughlin, Vice Chair of the Finance Committee, Tom Parker, Nancy Herholtz, our clerk, and John Damaris. Directly behind me, Julie Parento. Next to her, Robin Joyce, Bill Wall, Chris Candell, and Nancy Tame.
Thank you. And lastly, seated to my left is my town meeting colleague, Town Clerk Laura Towery. Now, the ground rules. Questions of parliamentary procedure will be decided with guidance from the Town Meeting Time, a handbook of parliamentary law. That's the Blue Book. There's a copy on the stage if you would care to look at it any time to decide whether the moderator is acting properly. On articles, the motion will be read by myself. It will be summarized by me, and then we will hear the Finance Committee recommendation. After that, the moving party, and after that, any speaker. To be recognized, shout, "Mr. Moderator." Wave your hand. Get my attention. Sometimes in the confusion of the debate, it's hard for me to see who wants to speak. So if you think you're being ignored, make yourself heard, please. When addressing the meeting, you must use the microphone in front. No shouting from your seat. Please come up to the microphone, and we'll have a discussion. Identify yourself and give your address. Keep it civil. No names, please. There's no need to refer to people by names. You can refer to them as the prior speaker, as the chairman, as the moderator, as a hot dog, whatever you want, but we don't need names. This will help keep the question civil. And please confine your comments to the question at hand. So if we're talking about a school budget, we don't want to hear about the playground at Powder Mill Park. I will ask that you limit your time before the meeting to five minutes on any one article. This is not a hard and fast rule, but a guidepost to allow as much participation as possible. As a general rule, except for rebuttal by the proponent of an article, speakers will only get one bite at the apple on any one article. And if you have something truly different to add, please let me know, and we'll see if we want to go on further with your discussion. Amending an article. If you want to amend an article that's presented, it must be in writing. There are motions on the floor on the stage to allow you to do that. You can amend that, and it must be seconded. Reconsideration. This is where we've already voted on something, and then later in the meeting, somebody makes a motion to reconsider the prior article. I am very reluctant to allow that under any circumstance unless there is some very compelling reason to do so. And even in that situation, if there is to be a reconsideration, I must know immediately following the vote on the question presented, and then the reconsideration must occur at this session tonight. Thank you for attending as we continue this purest form of democracy. Please remember that the second phase of this annual town meeting are the town elections, and they occur on Tuesday, May 13th, from noon to 7:00 p.m. There are contests to be decided and three important referendum questions. You have the town budget material in the warrant. That's the Yellow Book. Begins on page 22. And the budget will be voted on under Articles 7 and 8. That's the town budget. And I will not read through each line item. You can read through these if you have a question on any particular line item that you want to discuss. As we come to that article, you just asked me to please hold line 5 or line 6. We will hold the question, vote on the rest of the article, and then come back for discussion on whatever you want to hold. The town has gone through a great deal of effort through Spencer Cable Access and through the newspaper and then in public hearings to get this budget material out to you. So as the meeting goes on, please look through the budget. At this point, the chair will recognize Mr. Berthium. Mr. Woodbury.
Good evening. Thank you all for coming out tonight. We have some important issues before us, but before we get started with the town meeting. First of all, we have the meritorious award. Tonight, we're going to give the 2013 award. That goes out to Spencer Toys for Tots. Donna, if you'd like to come up, please. Thank you. Donna Flannery has been continuing the Spencer Toys for Tots program for more than 10 years. The Canoya Anderson family, relatives of hers, who have been running the program for many years and wanted to hand over the reins. She was at the right place at the right time, and she feels blessed to have the opportunity to serve the town in this capacity. This program is for the needy kids of Spencer. As we all know, Donna, over the years of working at Riceville, I know that, you know, we supported your program, as many people do. And the Spencer Children, it was started here more than 50 years ago. Toys are collected at various drop-off points. Monetary donations are solicited through a mailing program and through the new leader which is used to purchase toys for distribution. Applications for needy families are processed and documented, and a team of shoppers use a wish list to provide the families with the toys. Toys are sorted and packaged by families and are picked up by a parent or guardian the week before Christmas. We also take requests from families who wish to adopt a child or a family and match them with the needy families. Through these purchases, toys from, sorry, bring them to them for distribution. This program supplies toys to needy family and fulfills the obligation and request right through Christmas Eve. This is what community spirit is all about. It's what we thrive on in a small community, and for that, I'd like to thank you for everything you do.
I just wanted to say that I'm accepting this on behalf of all the volunteers of this program. We have so many people that make this program work. This one right here, Lisa DeBries, is the admin in my office, and she's the right and left hand of this organization. And so many of you who contribute, who shop, I am accepting this only for all of you. Thank you very much for allowing us to do this.
Thank you very much, Donna. That being said, that was for 2013. For 2014, the next award, I'm sure these people need no introduction. One of them is my colleague, who has been nominated many years and never accepted it. This family embodies the terms community spirit and volunteerism. That is Donnie. He's a construction engineer. He's done several things for the town over the years. Some things they have done over the past six years, and it goes out to Wendy, and down to Nikki. Brent's here somewhere. And it's a whole family thing. And what that involves is some of the things Donnie has done, and he doesn't like me saying it, is he did roofing for the disabled vet's house. The design work, because every, as most of you know, I'm on the Disability Commission, and I run into a lot of ramp situations, and he donates his time for that and does this stuff on the computer, which is beyond me. He did the design work to get the office at the senior center. He did it at the Legion. Some of that stuff, you know, nobody sees and nobody does. Some of the important things, and one of the things that really is true to us, is bringing back the traditional Halloween party. That Halloween party, as you all know, the guy that started is in the hall tonight, and that's Dutchy Malash. His picture hangs on the wall. So that's continued on. I think it's important. They started the Family Fun Day, the Christmas Light Parade. Just to say a few, besides the fact that our float that goes in every year, that the selectmen ride on, is built by him and some of the members, and they devote all the time to it. They took over the talk of the town. I think that ran for three years, if I'm correct. Another, you know, nice situation. And these are only a few accomplishments, but this is what community spirit, family value, and what family does. So if you're all welcoming, this is your 2014.
Mentioning the fireworks, if anybody's interested, we are looking for donations. We have to raise $10,000 every year for that, and it's getting harder and harder to get to that 10. So if you could, we'd appreciate it. You can contact the selectman's office. They'll tell you how to do it, or you can, there's applications and stuff online on the town's website you can find. And thank you for this. Thank you for everybody that helps us, and it's not just us. There's a whole lot of people, so I wish the board hadn't done this, but thank you. Thank you very much. All right, so now for the important one. Not that the other ones aren't important. A few years ago, I had brought to the board that we named this hall after Dave Echelberry. And the board actually had a much better idea, that we call it the Leadership Hall. So we officially renamed this room Spencer Memorial Town Hall Leadership Hall. And the idea is, well, the charge that we wrote is that this is for people that continuously, over many, many years, not just a few, put in and dedicate themselves to the town and make this community a better place. Tonight, we're going to induct somebody who, I'm embarrassed to say, I didn't think of it. It was, we should thank Selectman Fritz. He made the nomination for this person, and although this person is no longer with us, we have family members here, so we'll invite them up in a minute. Tonight's award is going to go to Miles McDonough, and we all know Miles McDonough is the man who started Flexicon. And I just have a few talking points here, and then we're going to invite the family up to accept the award. Flexicon, I always thought Flexicon was just sticky paper, but they do a lot more than that, so. Flexicon was founded by Miles 58 years ago, in 1956, and it says, "To meet the laminating needs of the shoe industry." And the son Neil here is tonight, maybe he can expand on that a little bit. It was started as a two-person operation, an empty auto body shop on Maple Street. That building is where the rescue squad used to be. That brick building, as you go up Maple Street, that's where Flexicon started. In 1959, they moved to Wall Street. Those brick buildings on the corner down there, and I don't know if you guys still own them, or you store stuff in there, right? In '68, they bought all the land where they currently are at the junction of Route 9 down the South Spencer Road and built plants 2, 3, 4, and 5 from 1969 to '88. The Technology Center, which we were, we got a tour of, it's amazing. They have clean rooms, and it's like a big chemistry lab down there. It's beautiful. That was built in 2012. It's a 20,000-square-foot facility, and it's all research and development. Spencer used to be the only location, and I didn't know this either, until 1993, and then they expanded to Columbus, Nebraska. And in the late '90s to Glenrothes? Did I say that right? Scotland. Huh? How about that's pretty good? All their plants are, or most of their plants are open 24 hours a day, seven days a week. They have 1,200 employees, and 800 of those are in Spencer. And they have this thing at the bottom, so I'm going to say, "The four cornerstones of the company are community, which is contribution and responsibility to our community, customers, service our customers beyond expectations, employees, respect and opportunity for our people, and suppliers, innovation in partnership with suppliers." All right, so tonight, we're joined by Neil McDonough, one of Miles' sons, Sean McDonough, Miles' wife, Jean, Mrs. McDonough, she's here, and also Mike Engel, COO, is here, and Joyce Laughin, who is Director of Marketing and Communications. She's running around with a camera. So if we could have you guys come up, and then I'm just going to read this, and then you guys. So it says at the top, and this will be on the wall in the back. We thought it'd be easy to do this up here today, so everybody didn't have to spin their heads around. Miles McDonough, born May 14th, 1929, and I hope this is all right. Died March 30th, 2012. Wife, C. Jean Traer McDonough. Children, Mark and Neil. And then it says, "Miles founded Flexicon Company in 1956 and built a world-class global manufacturing enterprise headquartered in Spencer, Mass, beautifying a large portion of town near the current Spencer transfer station. His endeavor employed hundreds in the community as manufacturing was transitioning out of Spencer in the '60s and '70s. Miles believed in sharing his success with the community and made community a cornerstone of Flexicon. Many remember the longstanding employee reward certificates that were redeemable at Spencer businesses only. His philanthropic focus provided support to many Spencer groups, including the Spencer Rescue Squad, Spencer Fire, and Spencer Police Departments. Spencer Toys for Tots and the preservation of open land effort with the Mass Audubon Burnco Pond Wildlife Sanctuary. Miles had a passion for learning and education. He supported the Spencer East Brookfield Regional School District, donating computers and assisting with the training program to incorporate computers into the curriculum. He established the well-known school stock program at Flexicon, providing free materials to area teachers and schools. He supported the David Proudy High School cheerleaders, the band, and many youth sports leagues. Miles also proudly supported the Richard Sugden Public Library and the David Proudy High School Permanent Scholarship Fund. The net result is a man who loved this town and spent his life enriching the lives of those that lived and worked in Spencer community." So with that, we thank you. Thank you.
I was going to read your comments. 58 years ago, it may have been an accident that my father ended up in Spencer, halfway between where he lived in Adic and where his original partner Roger lived in Holyoke. But what he found was a work, people who wanted to work and were willing to work, and an infrastructure in this town that supported his effort to be an entrepreneur. And over time, being able to buy the land down in South Spencer Road and expand, he always said, "Our success is in no small part to being in Spencer and the Spencer residents who make us successful today." Thank you for this honor. We're really humbled that you honored my father this way.
Article 1. Article 1 is a series of free cash transfers to balance the fiscal 2014 budget. There are five different items relating to snow and ice, parks and recreation, and general liability insurance to request a transfer of $207,704 from various accounts. Motion I have is by Mr. Woodbury, seconded by Mr. Berthium. Finance Committee recommendation, please.
Finance Committee recommends approval as printed.
Mr. Woodbury, do you have any comments?
Oh, Mr. Moderator, this is a yearly thing, and you all know what we went through this winter, so this is a shift just to cover that expense. You all know what we went through this winter, so this is just a change to cover the expense of the snow and ice.
Questions or comments? Are you ready for a vote? All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. Those that are opposed, and the ayes have it. Article 2. Article 2 is consensus article. We put several questions together that years ago we used to treat as individual articles. Specifically, we're creating revolving accounts for the Planning Board, Sugden Block, the Office of Development Inspection Services, Parks and Recreation, the Celebrations Revolving Fund, the Council on Aging Revolving Fund, Stormwater Management. And we also entered into certain authorizations for the selectmen to execute contracts in behalf of the town. We authorized the fire chief to collect fines for fire violations and put them into a special account, and we authorized the tax collector to enter into certain agreements to keep us running while waiting for the tax receipts to come in. Motion I have is by Mr. Woodbury, seconded by Mr. Berthium. Finance Committee recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends approval of this article as written.
Mr. Woodbury?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. We have several revolving accounts. This is just to put everything back in line, so everyone is kept separate.
Questions or comments? All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. Those opposed, and the ayes have it. Article 3. Article 3 is an annual article that we act on by state law to set the salaries for elected officials, particularly and specifically the Board of Selectmen, the moderator, Board of Assessors, the treasurer-collector, town clerk, the water commissioners, the sewer commissioners, and the Board of Health members. The figures that you have in here represent a 1.3% increase. It requires a majority vote. The motion is by Mr. Woodbury and seconded by Mr. Berthium. Finance Committee?
Finance Committee unanimously recommends approval of this article as written.
Mr. Woodbury?
Thank you. As the moderator says, it shows a small increase in every category. As the moderator says, it shows a small increase in every category that's on there, hopefully you had a chance to read it. And it's the only thing that we do, so, any questions?
Questions or comments? All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. Those opposed, and the ayes have it. Article Four. Article Four is an annual adjustment, which is done to the personnel bylaws, these are for non-union employees of the town who enter into certain grade categories, and these are adjusted annually by the Personnel Board. Do we have a member of the Personnel Board here that wants to speak on this tonight? Seeing none, we see that this presentation here will be explained by Mr. Woodbury, this requires a majority vote. The motion is by Mr. Woodbury and seconded by Mr. Bertheum. Finance Committee recommendation, please.
By a vote of ten in favor and one abstention, the Finance Committee recommends approval of this article as written.
Mr. Woodbury?
This article pertains to non-contractual employees, so they are treated separate.
Questions or comments? All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. Those opposed, and the ayes have it. Article Five. Article Five is the regional school budget. Motion I have is made by Mr. Bertheum, seconded by Mr. Fritz. This requires a majority vote. This sets forth the allocation for the school budget for the year, provided however, that the appropriations are contingent upon an election approval for the so-called Proposition Two and a Half Override Referendum question at the town election of May thirteenth, two thousand and fourteen. So your action tonight, if you vote affirmatively on this, must also be affirmatively passed at the town elections under question two. Mr. Bertheum, excuse me, Finance Committee recommendation, please.
Finance Committee voted nine in favor, one opposed, and one abstention, so we recommend approval of this article as written.
Thank you. Mr. Bertheum?
Article Five, the school, is a school budget. This is a one-vote article, it's just broken down, so everybody can see where the different amounts go. I'm going to defer to Superintendent Dr. Malvey to answer any questions on this one, so.
Dr. Malvey?
Thank you. Good evening, it's nice to be back, nice to have the rain out of the way, and hopefully the Bruins will pull it out tonight. I'm, uh, going to refer to the budget sheet that we left on the table, I hope you're able to pick that up on your way in this evening. We also have presented this on a number of occasions to the School Committee, as well as our public budget hearings, and we also have it available on our website, but we did bring copies this evening, so. So specifically, you're going to be dealing with the wording of the article in the town warrant, but the total budget is what I want to comment on, and I am going to give a introduction to it, and then Julie Suprenant, our business manager, is going to comment on the individual slides. And I also want to point out that we have the Chairman of the School Committee, Kevin Hayes, with us this evening, and School Committee Member Kurt Nordquist, I don't know if I've missed any of the other members in the audience. Great. And we have different school officials and staff on board as well. So the total school budget proposed FY fifteen is in the amount of twenty-four million, one hundred fifty, one thousand, seven hundred ninety-five dollars, and that represents approximately a seven hundred thousand dollar increase. As you go through the slides, you'll see that it's really revenue-driven, that is, we've only increased the budget itself for many new items in the amount of a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Everything else is considered a budget offset. Julie will cover in a little more detail the reductions that we're anticipating relative to grants that we typically receive from the Commonwealth and the federal government. Most school districts receive these, we've had a downward trend, as most places have over the years. So all we've been able to do is to look at what the projection would be of a decrease of those revenues, and we have to now offset that in our budget, because they are necessary services to provide to our children. We also have other grants that are really non-budget impact, that is entitlement grants that we receive, and if there's a fluctuation in that, it doesn't necessarily impact the operating budget proper. It could affect some of the services, but typically, we can make adjustments in that arena, and as I say, it doesn't affect the total operating budget and/or the assessments that go back to the respective communities. So with that in mind, the budget has been increased seven hundred thousand dollars, but it's really been primarily because of the offset on these budget, I'm sorry, these grant reductions, and the impact of school choice. We have more students leaving the district than returning, and that comes with a tremendous financial impact. I'm going to stop there and ask Julie to come forward and quickly walk us through some of these other items, and specifically to deal with the pieces that we've added to the budget, that the School Committee has voted out of the one hundred and twenty thousand. There's one personnel position, there's a program reinstated at the middle school, and then some curriculum materials that are long overdue at the elementary school.
Okay, the first slide just goes over the historical budgets, you can see that it's gone up this year by seven hundred thousand, and was drastically reduced last year. We also just gave a summary of the cuts that were made last year to get to where we are now, and all of these positions are still eliminated. The Director of Teaching and Learning, the Facilities Manager, the Dean of Students at Wire Village, seven elementary teachers, five junior high school teachers, four high school teachers, a preschool teacher, one and a half special education teachers, a psychologist, the elementary band, the Guidance Secretary. We closed Maple Street, cutting a nurse and a secretary, and have cut over a hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars in supplies. Okay. Going forward to FY fifteen, the increase of the seven hundred thousand, other than the hundred and twenty thousand, can be explained by the loss of school choice and grant revenue, which we're anticipating to be about two hundred and one thousand dollars. Our health insurance increases, worst case, we've got two hundred and seven thousand dollars. Last year, we hired about five employees mid-year, and we took their savings in December, and we now need to reinstate them at their full salaries for the full year, which is going to increase the budget by about a hundred thousand. Building heat, about twenty-seven thousand, special ed transportation increases, fifty-five thousand, and regular ed transportation, transportation, thirty-one thousand. The next slide just shows you the grants and historically what we've lost, and why we're anticipating the two hundred, almost two hundred and two thousand dollar decrease in revenue for next year. And then the next slide shows the hundred and twenty thousand, what it's made up of, it's reinstating some of the things that were lost in FY fourteen, adding an assistant principal back at Wire Village, adding money for workbooks, library books, the virtual high school program at the high school, Knox Trail Team Leaders, and the Conflict Mediation Program back to the district. So those are the only things that are added to this budget. And the back, there's just a budget summary showing how the budget's broken down by the different schools. So overall, the budget is up seven hundred thousand dollars, or two point nine nine percent, but that is increasing Spencer's assessment five hundred and thirty-eight, or seven point zero seven percent. And then you can just see where our revenues are coming from, and you can see that the state revenues are up zero percent, and that's why you see such a higher increase in Spencer's assessment versus how much higher the budget's up. So, and then there's just more detail on how the assessments are calculated.
I just would like to add on it, kind of give you the state of the school district, if you will. This time last year, I didn't have the pleasure of being with the town meeting at this particular time, I didn't join the district until July, and you'd already gone through, I believe, at least one iteration of town meeting with respect to the proposed budget. And then we had multiple meetings after that, which eventually ended up with the Commissioner of Education setting the budget. Now, without throwing salt in the wound, you know, coming off of fiscal year thirteen, going into fourteen, the regional school district was in dire straits. It required special legislation from the Commonwealth in order to bail out the district to keep it operating, the district had to borrow money to the tune of one point three million dollars. The special legislation also created a financial overseer to watch every financial move we make in the district. And we also have to have ultimate approval, despite what I may approve as Superintendent, what I may recommend to the School Committee for their approval. The further approval process requires the financial overseer checking in on it, and then ultimately, the Commissioner of Education. We lived very, very close to the vest, if you will, for this fiscal year fourteen. We did it on the backs of a lot of the Educational Opportunities Program, staff, et cetera, for your children. I'm not proud to say, as an educator, that I had to do that, but we did what had to be done, and we put the district on the correct financial track, we have solved and plugged the gap of that one point three million dollar deficit. We are now in a position in the fourth quarter of fiscal year fourteen, that we do not have a deficit, we're anticipating maybe a slight balance that we can roll into next year, and certainly, we will not be coming back looking for further appropriations, are going to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts for a bailout. The downside of that is, we're not completely out of the hole. As we look towards FY fifteen, if we really had a level budget, we probably would be in very, very good shape. But the fact that we're anticipating the loss of over two hundred thousand dollars on these grants, and then the adjustments with respect to the school choice and some other areas, we have to make up that difference in the proposed FY fifteen budget. And we're going to be able to do that with this budget. We also will be able to meet what we call level services, that is, if you simply change from fiscal fourteen to fiscal fifteen, we're going to be operating basically the same way with a little less money, and we've moved money around in order to meet that task. That's not really a good position to be in, because we certainly could use additional funding, and we could use, or we would like to be able to bring back a lot of the services that we've lost that Julie has identified, but that is not to be the case. But I'm asking for your support on behalf of eighteen hundred children that we serve in this school district, we want to keep moving in the right direction, and I think with this level service budget, we'll be able to do that and start to tackle the bigger issues that we're under scrutiny on, and that is our curriculum. Flip side, it's a non-monetary issue directly, but indirectly, you know that the State Department of Education came out and reviewed the district through what's called the D-SAC report, and that was made public. We've been making inroads on that with respect to curriculum and instruction, assessment, achievement for our students. We have a legitimate plan that will carry us well going forward, and we're starting to make progress with that. That will continue into year two, three, four, and typically, it runs on a five-year cycle, so that we don't finish after five years and say, pat ourselves on the back and say, "Well, didn't we do a great job?" We're done with that, we continue the process. So I think in one short year, we've been able to turn the district around, people are still committed to working very, very closely and conservatively in all the areas that I've identified, and I hope you people are as pleased as we are that we're heading in the right direction. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Mr. Nordquist? Mr. Nordquist, the member of the Regional School Committee.
Kurt Nordquist, East Brookfield School Committee. I would just like to hold Section Four of Article Five, Mr. Moderator.
I can't hear you, sir.
I'd like to hold Section Four of Article Five, which pertains to your right, and I could discuss that.
No, we're not, we'll discuss it, but we're not going to hold it, we're going to act on the whole question, so you can certainly discuss it.
Okay. You just said a while ago if you had anything to hold, so I just, why I'm asking you.
Well, that's in the town budget, where we have mine items.
Okay, fine. I have a couple of questions. First of all, the Finance Committee voted with two abstains, one abstained and one didn't vote. I have a problem with a member who's on there who voted in favor, they are supposed to be overseers for taxpayers. And I'm going to say tonight that this particular member is retiree, she's getting benefits...
You're getting close, Mr. Nordquist, please, let's not make this personal.
I did make it, I said a member. So they are getting benefits, which the taxpayers are paying for, and I believe that's a conflict there, the person should have abstained. But that being said, it wasn't done, so I just want to get that out there. My second question is, or my second statement, is on the override. I voted against your right on the board. My question was at the time, and to get back to the general question, we have to send a budget down to town for the town meeting, which we did. We also said, or they also said, that we can always cut the budget if it gets turned down. And after, after the time, and after the questions on the ballot, if it does get turned down, I have some more cuts to make to bring it down even more. We also don't know what the real state aid's going to be yet, so that could be coming back to help us out. But I still have some more questions to do some more cutting, to make this thing a viable situation. And I'd been on here when the farmer superintendent happened to get us into this jam, and we went downhill big time. And I take responsibility, like the rest of my members, the majority are not here now, they're not on the board, so I got to speak for myself, I guess. But it was done wrong, and there was no votes taken, there was no, it was just a half-assed thing done. And so I just want the people to know this, that there is problems to be taken care of later. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nordquist. Anybody else? Are we ready for the, no, we have one more.
My name is Caroline Dacey, two Fairview Drive, and I'm also a teacher at Knox Trail. I have two sons who attended Spencer Schools when they were rich with programs. They both graduated from UMass Lowell. From this firsthand experience, I want to share the way I look at things. I think that we can all agree that we are going through tough times. Some people are on fixed incomes or out of work, and one more expense is not the best news. I'm not here to change your mind, I just want both sides to, of the argument, to understand each other better, so that we can begin to work together. The town is made up of many departments, all of whom have needs and expenses. When the police or fire department asks for new equipment or vehicles, I vote yes. These institutions deserve our support, because they are acting for the people, and as a voter, I choose to trust that if they are asking for something, then they need it. I trust them, because their jobs affect us all. This goes for the Highway Department, Senior Center, Town Hall, Library, or the Parks and Recreation. All of these are part of our shared community. I teach visual art to grade six through eight, and I was a special education teacher for ten years. It's my job to understand the needs of our students, so that they can grow and have better lives of their own. Our students deserve access to the best education that we can provide. We have had cuts in programs, materials like textbooks, and increases in class size. Now we have lost access to computers and the internet, materials that I often use for students to research, visit online museums, and understand safe and responsible internet use. They also learn to use programs that will help them when they enter the workforce. This may not seem important to you if you do not use a computer, but many of the most accessible entry-level jobs for today's youth involve using these programs. Not teaching them leaves them at a major disadvantage. Basic requirements set by the Department of Education are not being met by our schools, because we lack the proper technology and funding. Our town is having trouble funding the needs of the schools, which affects their quality. Students are leaving this district, choosing schools in school choice. This can cost us more money if the receiving towns pay more per student. This can cost us more money if the receiving towns pay more per student. We pay that. I've been in education for nineteen years, sixteen years in Spencer, and things are constantly changing. I have been dedicated to provide a quality education. I am so sad to see programs lost, technology missing, crowded classrooms, and students expressing their desire to have schools the way they were last year. Students need adults who can give them time and attention to help them grow. We haven't had new textbooks in years. The internet provided a way to close that gap. It's more competitive than ever whether your child applies for college or goes directly to the workforce. I am committed to give them whatever it takes to help them on their path, whatever they choose. These are our children and our future. If they are not properly educated and prepared for life and as an adult, then we as a town are failing them. So I'm asking you to please take a moment to answer the question. Are we doing everything we can for our children? I'm happy to make myself available to anyone that has any questions about my experience in the classroom. After all, we share this town. I do believe that everyone, no matter their views, believes they are doing what's best for all. Thank you for listening.
Any other speakers? Mr. Shamath.
My name is Bill Shamath. I've served in the past both on the regional school committee and the board of selectmen. It would be easy for a lot of people to say, still angry over the turmoil that the school district went through a year ago, that they're still angry, there still must be shenanigans going on, and that to continue to fund the request would be somehow taxpayer abuse, which is the phrase I've seen on the signs. But a lot has changed since then, starting with the fact that I was frustrated at the town meeting, annual town meeting this time last year, when no one got up and explained the school committee budget. And that was one of the things pointed out in the report that we referred to. We have just received one of the most extensive explanations that we've received in years at a town meeting in regard to the needs of the school district. And they both, and they also have the safeguard of, a year ago, we didn't have a system of checks and balances at the school district. You didn't have a superintendent and a business manager. Now you have two very well-qualified people in those positions. If you look at all the surrounding towns around, you will see that Dudley, Shrewsbury, which for years was rated as one of the best school districts in the Commonwealth, Northbridge, towns that didn't have that fiscal mismanagement concern, are asking for much more substantial overrides than you're being asked for as a voter in Spencer. And over and over again, the reason is because while the state says it's giving you all sorts of aid, then they're increasing the expectation of what the communities have to pay. So while Spencer lost in actuality $8,000 from all their total state aid, the minimum local contribution that the state said we have to pay is up to under $50,000. So the state is continuing and has, from the time I was on the school committee till when I was on the select board with the current chairman of the school board, till now, has continued to shift that burden back to the local communities, all of them. And all of them are struggling. So it's an issue that every school district in town is struggling with. It's no longer fixing the problem of the prior superintendent or beyond that. Now the question to voters will have to decide, both this evening and on May thirteenth, is what direction do you want your kids to go in? Do you want your kids to have a future, to have a chance at a decent college, have a chance, the skills to compete in a computer age? Or do you want to go to the dark ages of education of not having the critical services you need? I certainly know my vote is for the kids.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Wozniak. I'm a newly registered voter, which is exciting for me. I am a student at David Proudy High School, and I've seen all the no override signs and I know many of you have probably already made up your minds, but I'd like to share our side of the argument too. So I'm graduating in a few weeks, and I'm going to be continuing my education at the University of Connecticut. My twin sister is going to be going to Providence College, and two of my best friends are both going to WPI for civil engineering. And you might be wondering why I'm saying this, because it is relevant, because those are just examples of three excellent colleges that students from David Proudy can get into. And if those schools don't impress you, not too long ago, one of our alumnis, Taylor Benninger, was admitted as a student at Harvard University. So those are just some of the amazing options that can happen if you actually apply yourself at Proudy. And I know some of you can remember when Proudy used to be a school people were proud to go to. My dad used to be on the track team, and he remembers that Proudy was a school that everyone had pride in. And personally, I'm proud to say that I've graduated from David Proudy. But many of my classmates won't agree with me, and many people look at Proudy and they laugh and they think it's a joke because it is a little rundown and we don't have a nice track, and our technology isn't advanced as some of the other schools like Tantascor or Shepherd Hill. But if students such as myself can get into such great schools, it can't be that bad. And I just think it's ridiculous if you look at the fact that if you apply yourself, what you can do, and many people don't realize that our MCAT scores are some of the best in the state. So although many people can view Proudy as a joke, without internet access, the only joke is that the townspeople would deny their students an education that will help them succeed. Yes, I got into my dream college, but what about the students graduating beneath me? What I don't think the rest of the town realizes is that without the ability to purchase new computers and new technology, something passing this override would do, the education of Spencer Eastbrook Field students is being hindered. Not only is it the fact that we're living in a world of advancing technology where a nine-year-old can operate an iPhone better than I can, but it's the fact that communication and expansion of knowledge has been greatly reduced. I can't speak to how the lack of technology has hindered Lake Street or Wyre Village, but I know that they must be suffering too if at the high school we have more computers in our possession and we're in the state that we're in. Students no longer are able to email their teachers with questions or send them projects such as PowerPoints or Word documents. Teachers no longer can access their emails and tell parents what the state their students' academics are in. If teachers access their internet, they're opening it up because we don't have the firewall to protect the students' information. So all of our medical records, all our birth information, everything is open to the world. So we're no longer allowed to access things that make it easy for communication. Well, let's see. And if it kind of, it's very frustrating for the parents and the teachers, and it's even more frustrating for a student, because we can no longer do research projects in school. We have to do them at home, and that's fine for some students who have computers, but some students, especially some friends of mine, they don't have computers at home. So what are they left to do? And then you have to look at students who take EP classes, which are college-level courses, and we no longer have access to online videos or educational links. And it's frustrating, like one of my psychology teacher is teaching me a lesson and he can't show me a video that she's chosen to show me to help me better understand the information he's trying to teach. And in David Proudy and as well as Wyre Village, we have smart boards in our classrooms, and the smart boards are $5,000 pieces of equipment, and now they're about as useful as a projector and a chalkboard, because you cannot use it for what it was designed for. And to top it off, the lack of technology impacts our extracurriculars as well. I am a class officer, and planning our senior class trip and our dinner dance is a convenience because our advisors lack the ability to communicate with us as well as our venues. It impacts our Envirothon team because we are unable to access the websites required for the annual competition or email farmers to set up visits for our interviews. We have to jump through hoops to manage everything. The same thing goes through student council. This spring, David Proudy hosted the regional spring conference, and it's about eighty schools. Their student councils all come to David Proudy and we meet and we vote for new officers for the following year. And planning this event was incredibly painful to do because we couldn't order anything through the school. We all had to do it at home. And communicating with the other schools and the leader of the Massachusetts Student Council was incredibly difficult. We didn't end up getting like a head count until the last week. And there's so many more things that are missing that the lack of technology impacts us, but the point is that it matters. And to all the townspeople who no longer have children in the system or never did, you can't be oblivious to the importance of a good school system. Good schools bring transfers and revenue. If Proudy doesn't get its technology back, who's going to want to send their kids here? The answer is no one. We're going to lose more town pride than we already lost. Our businesses will be impacted and our real estate will devalue. No one will want to move here, and the families who do live here don't want to send their kids to Proudy, so they may have to move away to find better schooling. And so my twin and I are the last high school students in my family, but I can guarantee that will vote for the override because every other student deserves the education that I received. I mean, think about it, somebody paid for your child to go to school and someone paid for their child to go to school. So now it's your turn to do your part to help each other out. And in the scheme of things, it's only an extra $116 per household, which does seem like a lot, but if you do the math, it's about the equivalent of less than five cups of coffee extra a month or one large pizza a month for a year. And if you combine that with the town override, it's about ten coffees a month or two pizzas a month, which is completely reasonable, at least in my mind, in exchange for what we can get back with the technology for our future leaders, which are our students.
A breath of fresh air. Thank you, Jennifer. Anybody else like to be heard, please? Mr. Hayes. Mr. Hayes is the chair of the regional school committee.
Ladies and gentlemen, what we just heard was a plea from one of Proudy's best and brightest students who came here tonight to speak on behalf of the other children in the district that may not be able to be here to speak for themselves. As chairman of this committee, which I have been for the last four months, I wish that I could come here and tell you that things are better than they are. I can't do that, but they are much better than what they were ten months ago, and we are making progress. We are currently in negotiations with the teachers' association. We've made progress with retirees and health insurance benefits, and we are going to continue in that vein. I can't come up here tonight knowing what you can afford to pay. I know what I can afford to pay. But our article that is before you tonight is contingent upon a vote at the ballot box in the annual election. I ask you tonight for your support to allow us to move forward so that all the residents in the community will have an opportunity to vote at the ballot box, and you'll have more of an opportunity to see things that we will bring forward from an informational standpoint that may make you feel more comfortable. I don't know where else we can go. Mr. Nordquist mentioned that if this is voted down, that we can go back to the table and cut the budget. And we certainly can do that and we will do that if that is the decision of this body. But I don't know, as chairman, where we go from this point to make additional cuts that aren't going to have a severe impact on the services that we need to deliver to the kids. The staff that we have working for us, and you can always find those few to criticize or find fault with, but overall are an extremely dedicated professional staff that do their best under trying circumstances. As the young lady mentioned, we had 800 computers that we had to take out of the school system. We have no internet access. We don't provide the best of facilities to our kids. We have students leaving this district by the handfuls, month after month. If we can't stop the bleeding, we're going to continue to lose more students. And for everyone we lose, we lose thousands of dollars, which puts us even further behind the eight ball. So it's a personal decision that everybody has to make for themselves. I'd ask you to just please consider, give in consideration to the kids and to our staff, and allow us to continue to work to straighten out the mess that we walked into some five or six months ago.
Mr. Moderator, just some clarifications, and maybe Dr. Malvi or Mr. Hayes could return to the podium, but I'm a little confused in that we're looking at the operating budget right now, and we do have a separate item addressing technology. So the shortcomings that are being experienced right now with computers, I thought were a separate issue from the operating budget that's under, that we're looking at right now. Am I incorrect in that? Could you just address that, Kevin or Dr. Malvi, just so that we make sure we keep our issues separate?
Mr. Moderator, through you.
Please.
Mr. Stevens is correct. There are two separate issues. There will be another article that we'll ask you to vote on in regards to the computers. It was mentioned by me because of the young lady...
Kevin, enter the mic.
Because of the young lady that had mentioned in regards to the computers. But they are two separate articles, and you'll have an opportunity to vote on the computers in a later article.
So just to be clear, a vote cast against the operating budget is not a vote against computers, correct? Okay. You want to say some more, Dr. Malvi? That would be helpful. Thank you.
Thanks, John.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Hayes clarified that. There are two separate issues. A little while down the road here, we'll be dealing with the computer request of, technology request, I should say, in the amount of $632,000. But I want to just reiterate what our student Jen was referring to. There is a connection, although there are two separate technical votes that will be made this evening, one on the operating budget, one on the capital request for the technology. But I think what the young lady was getting to is that the overall quality of education has been impacted here in the district. It wasn't a one-year issue. It's been coming for several years. When I referenced the DSAC report, the state agency that came out last year, eventually did a thorough, thorough review of the school district and then reported out in the late fall, really gave us failing marks, if you will, in a number of standard areas. That didn't happen overnight. Many years in the coming. So what we're trying to do is, and I think what Jen's point is, is that we need to change that trend. We need to reverse it this evening. Even though we have a level service budget, that can begin the process, and then hopefully, if we're successful with the technology piece, it all has a drastic impact on how students learn and achieve in this day and age. But two separate issues, I will not keep them separate because in this day and age they are combined, but in terms of the vote, John's correct, two separate issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes? Anybody else? Are we ready for the vote? All right. Now, you're voting on the operating budget for the regional school committee. The motion I have is I move to waive the reading and approve Article Five as printed in the warrant. So you're voting on what's printed in the warrant. It's contingent upon approval of question two at the annual town elections. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. Those opposed? The ayes have it. Article Six, the motion I have is I move to waive the reading and approve Article Six as printed in the warrant. Article Six is a petition article sponsored by ten citizens, and this seeks to increase the local restaurant tax by three-quarters of 1% over what you pay for your meals, and that that money eventually makes its way back to the town of Spencer as additional income. Finance committee, please.
Finance committee recommends approval.
Do you want to be heard on this further?
We do.
We do. The members of the Spencer Finance Committee, by a unanimous vote of the nine members present at the regular meeting on March 18, 2014, voted to request that the voters adopt Massachusetts General Law Section 64L, Local Options Meals Excise, in order to increase the revenue to the Town of Spencer. We, members of the Finance Committee, believe that the town must explore and accept every revenue source possible, given the current state of town finances. Finance Committee members recognize that because of the efforts of the town administrator and the cooperation of town employees, we do not have a spending problem. We have a revenue problem. We believe this is a creative solution to add revenue, since it spreads the cost over many people, a significant number of whom are not Spencer residents. The intent of the Finance Committee members was to provide an additional revenue source to our town, to supplement the revenue from town and state funding, perhaps to begin to give us some money to build up the stabilization fund. One member of the Finance Committee, who happens to own a restaurant in town, pointed out that the revenue realized could offset, for example, some of the capital items, the police cruiser, the town hall boiler replacement, microfilm reader printer that the library has been asking for for the last three, four years. We would also like to point out that the meals tax does not affect anyone who chooses not to eat at a restaurant in town, and that it will be leveled on not only Spencer residents, but anyone who does choose to eat a meal in town. And if you patronize restaurants in most of our contiguous communities, you're helping their towns, because most of them have already adopted this. Are there consequences if this article is not passed? Yes. The Board of Selectmen has chosen to reduce the amount of the requested override by $100,000, which is the estimated revenue to be realized if the meals tax is passed. Should this article not pass, one of the things that you received in your packet was articles addressing the FY 2015 budget deficit. The very top of the chart details what will be, what services will be removed from town if this article does not pass. There is also a handout put together by the town administrator, Local Options Meals Excise Tax, which gives more detail on this article. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes, sir. Mr. Stevens.
I think I'll find myself on the short end of this vote as well, but here goes. You all know that it has been a frustrating, challenging, and agonizing year of budget preparation. Our current revenues fall short of supporting current service levels. And that'll be explored in the articles that follow. And so this proposed meals tax is very tempting. It's low, for now. It's generated by an optional activity, as Ms. Brandy said, you don't have to go out to eat. And it's in good measure, paid for by residents of other towns who come to enjoy our eating establishments. And it's easy to start up and easy to collect. It sounds like a politician's dream, right? So why am I standing here in opposition to this article? Because regardless of the size of the tax, I don't think it is proper or fair for government to target particular business activity unless, with a special levy, unless there is a substantial documentable cost to the community of that enterprise. It's certainly not the case for the town's restaurants. They are not a burden. You know, they are, they are among our greatest commercial assets, and we need to encourage them, you know, not place obstacles in their path. And some folks say that we're just passing along a minor charge. But no matter how small it is, I think it violates a basic sense of fairness. It adds to the customers' costs, and potentially discourages commerce. In the end, it's a quick $100,000 revenue stream. I admit it. It's easy to identify and easy to pick up. Like I said in the beginning, it's been a tough year, and I think all ideas should be considered. I feel compelled to congratulate the Finance Committee on coming up with this idea. I think we need to consider everything. I would say, though, in the end, if it does not rise to the level of an important principle for you, like it does for me, I'd just like you to be mindful of the road we're heading down, potentially. Be alert to the likelihood that this tax will grow in the future and possibly become burdensome at some point. And also be alert to the possibility that certain other business activities may get targeted in the future, maybe one closer to your livelihood. Finally, if I have convinced anyone, you know, to look at this measure in a different light, I want to reiterate what Mary said. It comes at a price. All of these decisions do. But this is a trade-off. Each of us must weigh. I've made my decision on that, as you could probably tell. And now it's up to you. Thank you for your thoughts. Thank you for listening to my thoughts.
Mr. Berthew?
Years ago, when this came up, I don't believe any of the current members were on there. I was on there, and Seth Fancher was still on there at the time. And John's speech is exactly why we said no at the time, because of the local business. Unfortunately, we don't have a choice now. The Finance Committee put a petition article on. The Selectmen can't refuse a petition article, so Mary's right. We reduce the override to account for that $100,000. On this sheet that you guys got when you came in, that top part, if this doesn't pass, that's what you're going to lose. That's what we decided the other night to cut. So in all fairness, we did agree with John, but unfortunately, we're not at that point where we can, we had a choice to put it on the ballot or not. So just keep in mind that this top section is what this town will lose if this is voted down.
Thank you. Mr. Damaris?
My name's John Damaris, a member of the Finance Committee. And the reason that we okayed this was because we felt that if you go out to eat and you spend $100, it's going to cost you 75 cents. Now, I hear that we're going to end up having a lot more put on top of that. I was asking for a lot more. This is something pulled out of someone's head. We need money in this town. We need a new fire truck. The fire truck that's there, it's like 10 years old. If their house catches on fire, who puts up, who puts up the fire truck? Who drives the fire truck? These guys put their lives on the line every time they go out to a fire. They deserve to have the right equipment. We're just trying to find a way to raise money, to do the small things, the little things, without hurting anybody's pocketbook. I guarantee you, go to get your meal, and you get the ticket that tells you how much it costs, you usually just pay it and sign it. You don't just sit there and read the whole thing and say, "Well, no, I don't want to pay it because this tax is on there." 75 cents out of $100, there's not a lot of money to spend. We blow more than that. Please, give us a chance. We're all working so hard to put this town back on track. Give us a chance. Use this small minute here, this small amount, to help the town. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. James Whalen, Eighth School Street. Just to this point, if everyone is looking at this particular sheet that Mr. Berthew had referred to, the meals tax is a creative idea. I don't think anyone can disagree. And I totally understand where Mr. Stevens is coming from as well. Where I look at this from is that we are in a point, and this is communities across this nation, where we are seeing, I wouldn't necessarily say the end, but near the end of what we used to enjoy in terms of federal and state monies. That's what you're seeing in this budget, is the fact that this is all, a lot of this is starting to end, and now we have to look at, how are we going to keep up our services? So when you go to vote for this, all I just ask you to think about is what's important to you, and hopefully that's what guides your vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Whalen. Mr. Shamath.
When I served on the Board of Selectmen, and that was in the days when we didn't have a town administrator to rely on, I learned the key importance of having the town offices fully staffed. I respect Mr. Stevens's opinion, but I come from the viewpoint of cherishing an equally important value, that is, the availability of your town's services at reasonable hours, town hall services, to your public. And that accessibility is key. And that really came across to me when I was watching the various presentations that myself and other department heads engaged into the Board of Selectmen to describe the municipal services. And I saw the Veterans Agent speak about how it was important to have office hours, and that people were able to come in and meet with him directly to discuss their needs. If this article doesn't pass, and then the override for the town doesn't pass, you're looking at town hall being closed to the public three days a week. It's already closed one. If the override for the town fails, that's another. This would be a third. How can we possibly expect that, as town residents, that we can access the services we need from the town clerk, whether it be a dog license, or a marriage certificate, or looking up vital records, or going to the town collector to pay your bill, or going to the assessors to get key information for your property, or we want businesses to come in, and yet the hours of the building inspector would be reduced if this doesn't pass? Town hall is the key function of your community being able to work effectively. And if we don't vote this, then we could be looking at only having it open to you, the resident, two days a week. That doesn't make a good decision to me. So for the principle of openness of town government and availability to meet with people, for that principle, I ask you to vote for this article.
Thank you, Mr. Shamath. Anybody else? Mr. Woodbury?
Sorry for the props, but just to give you an insight on what this means, this is a coffee I bought in Leicester on my way here tonight. It cost me $1.06. This is Mr. Berthew's that he bought across the street. It cost him $1.05. So when we're talking small amounts, we felt as a board, instead of just taking money in, that we adjusted our override amount, so it was passed out evenly. Not just to the people of Spencer, but anybody using anything in our town. So I support Leicester when they stop. They should support us.
Yes?
Hi, Mary Williams, School Street, 29. I actually work for the town, and we've given up stuff every year, as you all know, as everybody has. But the meals tax is everywhere you go. You go to Auburn, you go to Worcester, you go to all the places around us. Like they said, you're paying 75 cents on $100. That money is going to save the town hall employees from losing one day's pay, as well as being closed. So not only are we closed, the employees who have been working for years are going to lose one day's pay. So I ask that you support this, as well as the town budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Purvier?
Jim Purvier, 4HJ Perrin Road. In Charlton, where I work, they wrestled with this as far as adding it or not. And I would just say to you, it made a difference about $180,000 in the budget. And in these tight fiscal times, you know, you're looking for avenues to help keep your services, balance your budget, and you will have one opportunity here to have other people bear the burden. So I don't see people, the restaurants, you know, in Charlton where I work, less people going out because of the additional. I just think it's your opportunity here, you know, to help out the town, keep the services. I mean, some of the stuff that you're seeing in there, closing, you know, town hall, shutting off streetlights, you know, other public, it's public safety issues, and, you know, the services, the accessibility. I think it's a win-win. And I would just say, if you had better economic times, and you find that you didn't need it, you could ask to repeal it.
Thank you. Are we ready for the vote? All right. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. Those opposed? Thank you. The ayes have it. Article Seven. Motion I have is I move to waive the reading and approve Article Seven as printed in the warrant. Article Seven is Part One of your town noneducational budget. This is, seeks approval to raise $8,370,405. The motion I have is by Mr. Berthew, and seconded by Mr. Fritz. Now, tonight, you're going to also be acting on Article Eight. Article Eight is the balance of the town budget as proposed, but subject in that portion to a two-and-a-half override. So we'll begin with Article Seven. If you want to touch on both questions, I have no objection to that. Motion by Mr. Berthew, seconded by Mr. Fritz. The Finance Committee, recommendation, please.
And the Finance Committee unanimously recommends approval of this article as written.
Thank you. Go ahead. I'm sorry.
Sorry. I have a lot to say tonight. I've saved it up for years. As the Finance Committee members reviewed the budget requests this year, meeting with all the department heads, attending myriad meetings with Board of Selectmen, going to school committee meetings, to gain as much knowledge as possible to inform their recommendations, it became clear to all of us that the budget issues did not take us, overtake us overnight, and you heard Dr. Malvi refer to the same thing. If you attended the April 23 Board of Selectmen's meeting, or watched it on Spencer Cable Access or YouTube, you heard Mr. Goddard explain exactly how the road to this deficit began and progressed. In 2008, with the decline in the economy, decline in state aid, and decline in local receipts. Relentlessly over the past six years, the administrator at the direction of the Board of Selectmen has driven to ameliorate the impact of the reduction in revenue to the taxpayers at the expense of town employees and the citizens by reducing the services that we get. The school district, although many do not believe it, has done the same by reducing services and eliminating programs. The members of the Finance Committee believe in fiscal responsibility. Do we want big government? Well, some may and some may not, but that is irrelevant. What we do want is a carefully crafted, reasonable budget that supplies to the town the absolute necessities in an environment that does not penalize our employees or our citizens, and does not place an onerous burden on our taxpayers, yet allows us to begin to rebuild our savings. Thank you.
Mr. Berthew, now it's your turn.
Is she done?
Yeah, that's, I have nothing else for the night.
All right. Last minute. As Mary said, so Articles Seven and Eight, they don't necessarily go together. Article Seven is the town budget, and this already includes that meals tax that we just voted on. So if you add those two together, the overall town budget is 8854405. If you get to see the presentation that Adam Goddard put on last week, the public hearing, it was amazing. It showed over the years what we've done to cut and trim back, you know, the 60/40 on insurance, and we've done stuff that no other- insurance, and we've done stuff that no other town around us has done. So that's why we had to come, had to come to you and ask for this extra money. As they said, there's really no place else to go without starting to cut into employees and services. So if there's any specific questions, I'm sure Adam will answer them off the top of his head. He's incredible, so.
Questions or comments? Sir?
Good evening, I'm Malcolm Spiker. My question is, in this article, it states to take $10,000 from Wetlands Protection Fund taxation. My question is, is that money that is charged for doing inspections and so forth, or does it come directly from the DEP portion that goes into this account?
Mr. Goddett.
Adam Goddett, Town Administrator. As far as the DEP fees, Malcolm, there's two separate fees when you file a Conservation Commission permit. One set of fees go to the DEP themselves, and another set come into the town. So the town collects that revenue from fees, permit fees, application fees, and keeps it in, in essence, a revolving fund. And that money is supposed to be used to fund programs associated with implementing the Wetlands Protection Act. What we do is we take $10,000 of that every year out of that revolving fund, and indirectly through this mechanism, it's funding, you know, staff at the Conservation Commission level. So it has nothing to do with inspections. We keep that separately. If you have a particular project, you pay a separate inspection fee, and then as the inspector goes out, we draw out of those funds.
Mr. Spiker, is your question answered? Thank you. Anybody else? All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. Those opposed? The ayes have it. Article eight. Article eight is the second half of the budget. This calls for the appropriation, $484,000, provided however that said appropriation is contingent upon an election approval for a so-called proposition, two-and-a-half override referendum question at the town election of May 13, 2014. That will be question one on the ballot. Motion I have is by Mr. Berthium and seconded by Mr. Fritz. Says I move to waive the reading and approve Article eight as printed. Finance Committee, please.
Finance Committee unanimously recommends approval of this article as written.
Thank you. Mr. Berthium?
This is the second part of the general government article. The list of things is in here, and it was also on the handout, so if we pass this tonight, if it fails at the polls, then it's, as the school budget is, this article's contingent on the override. So if that fails, then these items within this article and on that list will be cut.
Does everybody understand the import of that?
As I said before, I currently serve as an elected Park Commissioner, and I'm co-chairman of the Park and Recreation Department. We currently maintain seven different facilities: Luther Hill Park, O'Gara Park, Proudie Park where they hold the Veterans ceremonies, Bemis Park down by 49, Powder Mill Playground, which you see a lot of young families using, and Ralph Warren Park. These parks don't maintain themselves, they require funds. And if we do not receive, in essence, we will have no ability to operate if we do not receive the positive support in tonight's vote or in the override. In 1888, some very forward-looking people, including Luther Hill and Richard Sugden, donated both Luther Hill Park and the Sugden Library to this community, with the hope that for future generations of Spencer residents, that cultural life, quality of life, would improve and be better. If this question, both tonight and on the ballot fails, their dreams will be not realized. They would turn over in their grave, and things would go in the negative direction. When I came to Proudie after having my family move around the country, I didn't know how to swim. Yet, through going up to Luther Hill Park, I was able to learn. Swimming lessons have been provided there for as long as I can remember, and the beach has been open, and we've employed lifeguards, who are public safety personnel, even though they're paid under the park budget, to provide safety, and they have saved lives in this community. And I've been present at two Board of Selectmens, both when I was a Selectman and once when I was a Park Commissioner, recognizing our lifeguards who saved lives. I don't want to run the risk of having people go down to the beach and have something happen and not have the guards there. I don't want to have future generations of our children not learning how to swim like you and your grandparents and great-grandparents were able to do. I don't want the playground to deteriorate after the community effort that put it together. And I don't want to see our historic grandstand and fine quality of facility at O'Gara Park deteriorate. These impact not just kids, but families, and anyone who chooses to use those facilities. Library, I've, this is part of the education and culture, not just for the kids to be able to research, but people in a tough economy, they go to the library and they look for help trying to find a job using computers to expand their skills in their job search. It's a resource that would be devastated. Seven positions cut, key programs that enrich our young people and help people learn skills, gone. Richard Sugden didn't want that. I spoke earlier about the negative impact on Town Hall. Police, fire services would be negatively impacted. In essence, and most of all, the opportunity to finally give our senior community a quality of service and center that they deserve. And I know the needs down there because I've served as Chairman of the Council on Aging. And our senior population is ever-increasing, and that's one guarantee, that as long as you continue living, that one day you will be a senior citizen, so that will impact everyone, whether they have children or not. And you will want those services there. It's not just people playing bingo, it's staff dedicated to helping people solve their problems, get the services they need, and hopefully eventually, people who can't come to the center for the services to receive them. So, the question before you tonight is, do we continue the legacy of Richard Sugden, Luther Hill, David Proudie, who helped spur this community in the historic year 1888, and invest in our children through Parks and Recreation and the library? Invest in our town employees through Highway Department and Town Hall? Invest in public safety through the police and fire? And invest in giving back to our senior citizens, who have given so much to ourselves? Or do we take a drastic step backwards? I urge every voter here tonight to support both the article and those who will watch this at home, to support investing in their community by voting for the override for town services on May 13. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Damaris?
John Damaris, once again. I got on the Finance Committee at the beginning of this year.
John, you really have to get up and embrace that mic.
Can everybody hear me? I don't want to get too loud. I've been on the Finance Committee now for about four months, through all this stuff that's going on with the school budget, and I've attended their meetings. All the meetings that we've had here, we have brought in facts and figures and everything else that you needed to see what kind of condition your town was in. They have taken and made every cut that they can possibly make. People that work in the departments have taken cuts in pay. They've taken all kinds of cuts themselves. I think that they're getting a little tired of working for nothing. I think they're getting a little tired of not having the respect that they deserve for all they do. Fire Department, Police Department, Highway Department, the library. If you look on page 13 in Article eight, you'll notice a bunch of figures. Those are the figures that will go in with this override that we're asking for. Take a look at them. Because if we don't vote the override, those figures are taken out of the town's budget. That means cuts in the library, no more schoolchildren stories being told down there, and a lot of other things that they do down there be cut, because the library will lose a lot of its people that are usually in there. Council on Aging. I've been in this town 40 years. I've been, I ran for Selectmen, and I was on the Finance Committee before. The older citizens in this town have been waiting 40 years to have something happen, to give themselves something back for the monies that they paid, just like you pay. All their taxes, everything else that they needed. People, if we do not support this budget, we're going to lose a lot more than you can even imagine. And then, we're going to hear a lot of people crying. Where's this? Where's that? Where's the other thing? How come I can't do that anymore? Why don't, why is the Town Hall closed? I can't even pay my bills to go up there and talk to somebody. These things are going to happen. Please, think about that. We have to support our town. We have the lowest tax rate in any place around us. Why did all the other towns around us have all the things that we don't have? Because of the support of the people in town. They don't say no to things when they're tough and they need help. Believe me, the Selectmen have done everything, everything they could possibly do, and they've shown you what they've done. Please vote for the override.
Thank you. I think we're ready for the vote, unless somebody has something, I'm sorry. One more.
I'm Donald Clough. I live on 4 Cresview Drive, Unit 54. A little background, I've been a Spencer resident since 1947. I was educated in Spencer, spent my entire adult life in Spencer, but even more importantly, I was a member, elected member of your Board of Assessors for 30 years. I see these signs about stop taxpayer abuse. I have my senior moments, but I don't recall any taxpayer abuse for the entire number of years that I have lived in this town. There's a lot more involved here than the Park and Recreation and the senior citizens. There's a lot of things that we will be deprived of if we don't pass this. I just think it's unconscionable for people to say no to this question, both now and at the town meeting on May 13. Thank you.
Are we ready for the vote? All right. All those in favor, please raise your cards. You are voting to approve Article eight as printed in the warrant. Thank you. Those opposed? The ayes clearly have it. Thank you. Article nine. Article nine, I move to approve Article nine as printed in the warrant. Motion is by Mr. Fritz, seconded by Mr. Stevens. Article nine is the Water Department budget. Each year, we appropriate money for the Water Department for it to run, and we're paid back through the receipts paid by the users of the water system. Finance Committee, please.
Finance Committee unanimously recommends approval of this article as written.
Mr. Fritz?
As Mr. Adams said, it's just our regular budget, and it's paid for by the water users. It's just the same thing every year.
Short and sweet. Thank you, Mr. Fritz. Anybody else? All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. Those opposed? The ayes have it. Article 10. Article 10 is the Sewer Department budget. Same situation there, an appropriation paid back through receipts. The motion is by Mr. Fritz, seconded by Mr. Stevens. It requires a majority vote, is to approve Article 10 as printed in the warrant. Finance Committee, please.
Finance Committee unanimously recommends this article, approval of this article as written.
Thank you. Mr. Fritz?
Same thing as the water, it's just a regular sewer budget for the year.
Questions? All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. Those opposed? The ayes have it. Article 11. Article 11 is the Bay Path Vocational Technical Regional High School Budget Assessment. The motion I have is to approve Article 11 as printed in the warrant. Motion is by Mr. Stevens and seconded by Mr. Woodbury. Finance Committee, please.
Finance Committee unanimously recommends approval of this article as written.
Thank you. Mr. Stevens?
Just to add some information to the article as you see it printed, the first line, the $708,867, represents the minimum assessment that the state has determined that is what we are paying to Bay Path. On the third item, the buy-in, that just represents the amount that we've been paying for the past eight years, and we'll pay for two more years for our students to attend Bay Path because we are not one of the original 10 towns, I think 10. And finally, that last item is also, you'll see that in the, among the items in the debt exclusion, so we need the authorization to continue paying that each year. And I believe Mr. LaFleche was here earlier, if he is still here, if there are questions. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
You're welcome. Any questions? All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. Those that are opposed? The ayes have it. Article 12. Article 12, Article 13, Article 14, all relate to the same subject. These are high school tuition and transportation costs for our high school students who are attending agricultural programs in North Hampton and Walpole and Sturbridge. And we are required to pay these by law, so not a lot of choice in this. Mr. Stevens?
I have nothing to add to that, Mr. Moderator. This is, these are routine items, and we are mandated by the state to cover these programs which are not available in our district.
Finance Committee, please.
Finance Committee unanimously recommends approval of this article as written.
So the motion you have is to approve Article 12 as printed in the warrant. Are there any questions or comments on this?
Susan Turkany in High Street. I'm wondering if there's a total available for those three items? How many students it is, and how much longer we have to pay those?
I'm sorry, is your question one of the totals of Article 12, 13, and 14? I'm sorry, I just was asking for clarification. I think she's asking for the totals for Articles 12, 13, and 14. The Article 12 is for one student. Article 13 is for three students, and Article 14 is for one student. The one, Article 12, the student is a freshman, so we have four years to pay on that. Article 13, I believe two students are sophomores and one is a freshman, so we have the remainder of those. have the remainder of those. And Norfolk, this will be the child's sophomore year in September. Total money, off the top of my head, forty-five and fifty-five is a hundred, almost a hundred and forty thousand dollars for five kids. Yep.
Any other questions? Yes, Mr. Purvier.
Through the moderator, Jim Purvier, for J. Parker. Are you, some of the students, I know in Charlton, we have some students that are gonna be going. Are they gonna be sharing the cost with that? Okay.
I can just, I can tell you that the expense for transportation for the child for Norfolk County, when we were looking at it last summer, was two hundred dollars per day, so it was thirty-six thousand dollars. So I approached the town administrators of Charlton and Dudley. I think Charlton has two students and Dudley has one. So we carpool now, and we have one van pick up a child in Dudley, one van pick up a child in Spencer, and then meet in Charlton, and then the two vans split into one and they go to Norfolk. That saves us a hundred dollars a day, so we were able to reduce it from thirty-six thousand to eighteen thousand.
Any other questions?
You're welcome.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes?
The, the, people might also like to know that Representative Gobi is working on some legislation to provide some of these programs potentially in cooperation with Bay Path and the veterinary school, Tufts Veterinary School in Grafton in the future.
Thank you, yes. That's, that is a new development, and things are happening. We're trying to do something about this through those efforts and Mr. Gardett's efforts. Any other questions on Article Twelve? Ready for the vote on Article Twelve? Mr. Schamath, do you have a question?
You should also know that the Select Board has worked with our legislative delegation to try and get the state to assume more of the cost of this and make it less of an unfunded mandate, so they are to be commended for those efforts as well.
Article Twelve. I move to approve Article Twelve as printed in the warrant. Majority vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. Those opposed? The ayes have it. Article Thirteen. Same situation. I move to approve Article Thirteen as printed in the warrant. This article relates to Tantascua. Finance Committee, please.
By a vote of six in favor and five opposed, the Finance Committee recommends approval of this article as written.
Motion is by Mr. Stevens, seconded by Mr. Woodbury. Any questions on this? I see none. Ready for the vote? Raise your cards if you are in favor, please. Thank you. Those opposed? The ayes have it. Article Fourteen. Same question, but this relates to Norfolk County Regional Agricultural High School. Motion I have is to approve Article Fourteen as printed in the warrant. Motion by Mr. Stevens, seconded by Mr. Woodbury. Finance Committee, please.
Finance Committee's vote was eight in favor and three opposed to recommend approval of this article as written.
Questions? All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. Those opposed? The ayes have it. Article Fifteen. Article Fifteen, I move to approve Article Fifteen as printed in the warrant. Article Fifteen is the town capital request for a town hall boiler to be paid for from free cash. This is not a tax item. This is from available funds. Motion is by Mr. Fritz, seconded by Mr. Stevens. Finance Committee, please.
Finance Committee unanimously recommends approval of this article as written.
Thank you. Mr. Fritz?
This past winter, we had quite a bit of problem with the boiler, and I contacted the gas company. They're willing to put the gas line in for nothing, and so we're gonna do that and switch over to gas, which will save us a lot of money.
So it's about saving money. All those in favor of saving money and approving this article? Thank you. Those opposed? The ayes have it. Article Sixteen. Article Sixteen is a transfer item. Motion I have is I move to approve Article Sixteen as printed in a warrant. This concerns an appropriation by transfer to fix the stair treads in the town hall. Motion is by Mr. Fritz, seconded by Mr. Stevens. Finance Committee, please.
Finance Committee unanimously recommends approval of this article as written.
Thank you. Mr. Fritz?
As you can guess, we ran out of money when we were doing them, so we need nine hundred and thirty-two dollars to finish the job.
Questions? All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. Those opposed? The ayes have it. Article Eighteen. Article Eighteen is the Water Department Capital Plan. This is a transfer from their surplus funds. The motion is I move to approve Article Seventeen as printed in the warrant. Motion is by Mr. Fritz, seconded by Mr. Stevens. Finance Committee, please.
Finance Committee unanimously recommends approval of this article as written.
Mr. Fritz, you're on the stage again, please.
We're gonna be putting a new water main on Grant Street, and that's what this money is for.
Questions or comments? It's a transfer item. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. Those opposed? And the ayes have it. Article Eighteen is the Sewer Department Capital Program. Again, this is a transfer from retained earnings. It's not an appropriation from taxes. The motion is to approve Article Eighteen as printed in the warrant. It's by Mr. Fritz, seconded by Mr. Stevens. Finance Committee, please.
Finance Committee unanimously recommends approval of this article as written.
Thank you. Mr. Fritz?
The Sewer Department's gonna be doing upgrades to the plant, and that's the money they need to do it.
I like you, Mr. Fritz. Questions, comments? All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. Those opposed? The ayes have it. Article Nineteen. Article Nineteen is, I move to waive the reading and approve Article Nineteen as printed in the warrant. Motion is by Mr. Stevens, seconded by Mr. Woodbury. This is a request to relist and revalue taxable personal property. This is for businesses that operate in the town, not for your TV and your home. Finance Committee, please.
Finance Committee unanimously recommends approval of this article as written.
Thank you. Mr. Stevens?
I am just informed by Mr. Gardett and talking with him about how this works is, this money is used to hire a team, some consultants, to do that evaluation of personal property on commercial and industrial sites, so that's how that will work. Periodically, we have to do that, and then it's included in our overall value that we can, which we can tax to support the town.
Questions or comments? All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. Those that are opposed? The ayes have it. Article Twenty. Article Twenty is the Regional School District Capital Request for Computer Technology Upgrade in the amount of six hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars. Your action here tonight on this article is to approve their prior action to borrow this money, and your approval will be dependent upon Proposition Two and a Half override on Election Day on the thirteenth. That will be question three. We've already discussed the technical end of this, so I think most of you know what this is for. The motion that I have, and I have to read this because there's one or two words that are different from what is printed in your warrant. I move that the town approve the six hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars and no sense borrowing authorized by the Spencer East Brookfield Regional School District for the purposes of purchasing computers and upgraded technology equipment, provided, however, that this debt approval and appropriation is contingent upon approval of a so-called Proposition Two and a Half Debt Exclusion Referendum question at the town election of May thirteenth, two thousand and fourteen under General Laws, Chapter Fifty-nine, Section Twenty-one C, Subsection K. Now, this is a debt exclusion. This is not a permanent override, so this will last as long as the borrowing lasts. It would eventually go away, just as your debt exclusions do on fire trucks and other major capital expenditures. The motion I have is by Mr. Woodbury, it's seconded by Mr. Berthium. Finance Committee, please.
Finance Committee by a vote of nine in favor and two opposed recommends approval of this article as written.
Thank you. Mr. Woodbury?
Thank you. I'll make this real easy. Peter explained it very well. You're approving the district to borrow the money, subject to the vote on the town election of May thirteenth. If there's any questions, I'll defer them to Dr. Malvi.
Mr. Nordquist?
Kurt Nordquist, East Brookfield School Committee. I made the motion at the school committee to have, for a debt exclusion, so it'll be paid off in four years, and it'll be gone. It won't be a permanent override. And as it stands now, from what I understand from the business manager...
Wait, wait a minute now. You have a motion, you're moving to amend the article?
I just want to explain the article, Mr. Chairman, I'm Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Nordquist, are you moving to amend the article? Are you moving to change the wording of the article?
I just want to explain how it's gonna be broken down.
I'm sorry, I thought you said you moved to change it.
No, I just want to explain how it's gonna be broken down.
Okay, all right. So you're not moving to amend this article?
Correct.
Thank you.
I just want to explain how it's gonna be paid for. Spencer and East Brookfield, the town of Spencer will be paying five hundred and seventeen thousand, one hundred and two dollars with interest over a period of four years. East Brookfield will pay a hundred and fourteen thousand, eight hundred and fifty-seven dollars and sixty cents, and that will also be paid off in four years. They're paying eighteen point eight percent, and the town is paying eighty-one percent. This is to buy the computers, roughly three hundred, I understand, for the school district. We have to really have this because everything's out of standstill, but this is, I think, is the best way to go. It'd be paid off, and it'd be over. If we don't do this, it's gonna come back in the school budget, and it could end up being a permanent fixture, so if we're gonna spend our money, I think this is the way to go. Take a car loan out, pay for it, and be done with it, and we'll have, we'll have help the kids in education. Thank you.
Mr. Nordquist, my apologies. It's difficult to hear what you're saying up here on the stage, so I apologize. Questions or comments? Mr. Stevens?
I would just, I would just like to ask Dr. Malvi or Mr. Hayes to provide a little explanation regarding the figure of six hundred thousand plus in relation to the one point two million, which is at the bottom of the tally on the second page of the handout on technology. If you could just help us understand how that six hundred thousand fits with the one million, one point two, please. Thank you.
Dr. Malvi?
Thank you. First, I want to just do a slight correction. We were sharing some numbers over there, and I just want to set the record straight. The request in front of the body this evening is to approve six hundred thirty-two thousand dollars in total, and then that'll be split by the percentage costs on the assessment for Spencer and East Brookfield. I think Kurt had one of the numbers reversed there, but just on face value of six hundred thirty-two thousand dollars, the assessment to Spencer would be five hundred seventeen thousand dollars, one hundred and twenty cents. East Brookfield's portion would be a hundred and fourteen thousand, eight ninety-seven, sixty. But what you're approving, if you approve, you're voting on the full six thirty-two, and then because of your regional agreement, it's gonna be split based on what the percentage costs are on the assessment. I think one of the figures Kurt gave was, we had calculated a guesstimate, if you will, at an interest rate of approximately five percent, not saying that that's what it would be the borrowing at, but he mentioned that it was a higher amount of five hundred ninety-seven thousand dollars. So, so for your purposes, just stick with the six thirty-two, and Spencer's assessment would be roughly five hundred seventeen thousand and some change. Now, to Mr. Stevens' point, I hope you picked up the information sheet on the table again this evening when you came in. Also, we have posted information on our website. We also sent home information with the students strictly to explain the issue that we're dealing with in the Regional School District based on a number of questions that we have received over the past several weeks. And in addition to that, because we use what's called the one-call system in the district where I or my colleague administrators can put out notices to all the folks that are registered, whether they're parents or people that are interested in the school district, I put out a notice last evening. I will apologize if some of you got multiple calls. We live in the day of technology, and even though, as I was going through it, and you deal with certain prompts, it was not coming out correctly, so I had to cancel, and the response was that it was canceled, and then I would do the follow-up eventually to correct it, but unfortunately, technology doesn't always work a hundred percent, and some people got multiple calls, so I apologize for that. Now, to the point of the information sheet, in essence, the issue is, the district, as all school districts, as all computer systems, that heretofore operated on what's called the XP Operating System, which is a product of Microsoft Corporation. As of April eighth, that XP system was no longer supported by Microsoft. And in our situation, as with all school districts and enterprises that use, or had used, the XP system, it, in essence, put us out of business. The primary reason is because once we would go on to the Internet, we became vulnerable for security breaches. The student, Jen, had mentioned that in her commentary with respect to how that impacts the student's ability and the professional staff's ability to access Internet. And literally, come the fourth quarter, April eighth, the rug was pulled out from underneath the educators in this district. Now, people have rightly asked and said, "Well, you know, why wasn't this addressed earlier?" We have known for years, this has been two, three years in the making, and there have been reports developed in the district, there is a technology plan, needs to be updated, but there is a technology plan. There was a technology advisory group that still is in existence this day, and they had advised over the past several years that the technology was coming to a crash, if you will. Plus, overall, it was outdated, but the district, for whatever reason, was not in the position to address it. Most school districts throughout the Commonwealth have addressed it, and they planned their correction over a phase-in process. When I came into the district in July, although I was aware we were gonna eventually have to deal with this day, we did not have the financial capability to start chipping away, and in fact, we had no wiggle room whatsoever. So I really had to bite the bullet with everyone and told them, "We just have to hunker down and wait till we get to the fourth quarter of the financial year." If come the fourth quarter, we can ride out the winter, we don't have any major boiler issues, we don't have any major structural issues, we don't have any major legal issues, and the list goes on and on and on, we may be in a position that if we can squeeze out a few dollars, we can start to deal with this issue under the operating budget. And through the positive action of the Regional School Committee, we've been able to nip away at a little bit of it from an overall capacity of computers, over eight hundred in the district. Come April eighth, they were offline. Of those eight hundred computers, only two hundred and forty-five of them were still operable enough such that we could upgrade them. Microsoft had no patch. They had no fix. There was nothing that we could purchase to make that system, XP system, continue to work. So in essence, we were out of business come April eighth, but through the action of the school committee and through our tech... But through the action of the school committee and through our technical services department, we were able to identify two hundred and forty-five of those eight hundred computers and say, "They could be upgraded if we could receive some money." The school committee approved an authorization of approximately fifty-five thousand dollars to be transferred from the operating budget. And then most recently, we came back to the school committee with a second transfer request of one hundred thousand dollars to continue the upgrade and purchasing of new computers. Remember, only two hundred and forty-five of the eight hundred could be upgraded. Anything beyond that, in our view, would need to be new. So what John is referring to on the back of this information sheet, there's a listing, our best take at this point in time, and it's about one point one million, that we listed down a menu that we thought would be our best estimate to continue the process, albeit we knew one point one million was not going to fall out of the sky. But if we could start to make an inroad on that, and we targeted six hundred thirty-two thousand dollars of the one point one million. So as that's listed out, you can see that we're trying to get to our goal of getting back in the range of the eight hundred computers. Wouldn't we all like to have that happen overnight? Certainly, the students and the staff would have preferred that that be in place after April vacation with seven weeks of school left. That's not going to be the case. So we have to, in all honesty, come forward and say, "The issue is not going to go away, and we're not going to be able to fund it under the current operating budget." So with the discussion with the school committee, we felt it would be better to bring it forward as a capital request, have both towns take a look at it, see if we could get our heads together of how we could move forward on it. If not all at the one time, then how we might be able to pick away at it. But ultimately, we would have to come back with additional requests, getting closer to the one point one, and that's only as what we currently know. As we start to go through the system, and I liken it to if you do a project in your home, if you start to rewire, if you have old wiring and you think you can get from one point to a second point, and then find out that junction boxes or connections, et cetera, et cetera, need to be brought up to code, that leads you further down the line. Similarly, when you do a plumbing project, you think you might be able to replace one piece of pipe, but then it ends up with a connection or an elbow or shut off, and, you know, here we go. You keep going. So it could be more than this as we go down the road, but at this stage of the game, we're looking just to get back to the playing field that we were all on prior to April eighth. The last example I can give on it is, I liken it to, that if we were all to step out of the auditorium here for ten minutes and have a cup of coffee, and come back and the chairs were gone, the mics were gone, the tables were gone up front, everyone would kind of say, "Well, now, how do we operate now? What's going on?" This is the situation we're in. Literally, from an education standpoint, we've almost come to a halt because the students, as Jen had mentioned, may have been involved in projects, current research. We had to take them off the Internet because as soon as we allowed anyone to get onto the Internet, we became vulnerable to hackers. From an administrative standpoint, now that we're starting to build back a small number of the computers, two forty-five, potentially another seventy to one hundred, we may be up in the three hundred fifty range. So we're looking at, we might be four hundred and fifty computers away from our goal of eight hundred. But from the limited amount that we've had, we literally had to ration them back administratively and to certain areas within the district, and we still can't meet our obligations. We're in noncompliance now with many of the education components and reporting that we have to provide to the State Department of Education. Many of our special needs students that heretofore had their programs built into their IEPs, their individual education plans, and it required certain work on computers. Security issues relative to information that the professional staff have to put onto the computer, we're limited in that, and I can't wait to the end of school so that we can breathe a little bit of fresh air. But the new school year opens up real quick, so necessity is upon us. As you look at the listing, we've simply strung it out to say, "We need computers. We need servers. We need switches. We need new bandwidth requirements." And the list goes on and on. If you have any specific questions on those, I'm going to defer to a technology specialist, Steve Torrey, who has a wealth of information. Kind of look at him as the computer mechanic. He can take it apart and rebuild it, and it works when you plug it in. But beyond that, this spells out what the issue is, how we're trying to address it, the immediacy of it, and what our plan is overall to start to make some incremental improvements. Thank you.
Thank you. Nancy?
I'm on the financial committee, and I was one of the dissenting votes against this. Not that I don't think absolutely the schools need new computers. Technology is the future. This is the way to teach. It has to happen. What I didn't like about the proposal at the time that we were voting was the plan was as he says, Dr. Malvi, it's developing. How did we let ourselves forget about technology in our schools? I mean, that's really a shame, that the kids coming out of school are going to be at a disadvantage. So yes, I dissented because I think it should be stronger. I think we really need to know what the plan is, how it's going to be implemented, and hold everyone's feet to the fire that we do this for the kids. That's their future. They're your kids. So I just wanted to explain the non-vote, but I would disagree with myself now and say, "Please, you know, vote for this."
A convert. Thank you. Ms. Chaney. How are you?
My name is Chris Chaney. I live at fifty Junior Spencer Road in Spencer. I am also a seventh grade teacher at Knox Trail Junior High. I would like to address the need for technology in the classroom. When my students were learning about genetics, they were able to participate in an online activity which allowed them to virtually clone their own mouse. In the current science textbook available for use, genetic engineering is discussed as a possibility in the not-too-distant future. When we dissected sheep hearts, students were able to watch a discussion on YouTube in order to gain a better understanding of the procedure, thereby ensuring more effective use of time. These are just two of the many instances technology has been integrated into my science curriculum. Because the print material is so outdated, I must rely heavily on Internet access in order to allow my students opportunities to gain insight on the most up-to-date concepts in the world of science. On any given day, a student will come up with a very good question. I don't always have a very good answer, but with the help of a computer and knowledge of reliable sites, I can investigate and find the answer. For those of us of my generation, we know what life was like without computers. Today's student does not. My own children always have a laptop at arm's length. It has become their learning style, and it should be. They will be facing a world that will expect them to be able to navigate the computer world with ease, no matter what career path they decide on. It's our duty as a community to support them. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Whalen.
Again, James Whalen, Eight School Street. I promise to be succinct, even though what I'm going to present is going to be a little hard to initially understand. No, technology is great. Our schools definitely need it, and you can do a lot of research, including financial research. And something that really bothered me was that on the night of the twenty-third, when Mr. Gardett had presented this to us, it was, come to understand it, it would be on the town's burden to take out this debt exclusion. Real quick, what I uncovered on my own research is that our town's bond rating on our general obligation loans or bonds is a much significantly higher rating than that of the school districts. My question that I wrote in an open email to our superintendent, which I did post online, I asked him if he knew about this prior, and I really didn't get a definitive answer. So I'm hoping that maybe this particular question can be answered. And to be even more succinct, if anyone would like to look at what I have, I'm sitting in the second row on the right over here. Thank you.
Mr. Hayes.
Mr. Moderator, in answer to the gentleman's question, it was never the intent of the school committee to have the town of Spencer do the borrowing for us. The article was sent down to the town. We met with the Board of Selectmen, I think, three nights before the deadline was going to take place for debt exclusion questions. We sent the article down simply to be able to meet the deadline that the town had for debt exclusion questions to be put onto the ballot. But it was never our intention to ask the town to be doing the borrowing. They will not be doing the borrowing for us. If the articles are approved, the school district will be going out and doing the borrowing on their own.
Mr. Shamath, I'm going to come back to you in just a second, okay? Right here, please. But I'm going to come back briefly.
I'll be quick. I have a question. Kyle Sullivan, Seventeen Greenville Street. I speak on behalf, or I speak with, some folks inside in the town that have technology backgrounds, engineering degrees, et cetera, as myself. And just looking at the breakdown of the technology, and by the way, I have four kids in the district, so I believe technology is important, but we do have to, due to economies of scale, a lot of this stuff has become quite cheap over the years. So we do want to look at every line and make sure that we're doing the right thing. And I have a question for the technology staff. In particular, what's kind of making a few of us scratch our heads is the seven K per district switch. And these are network switches. We understand that they're enterprise-level switches and need to have a certain parameters and security in order to defend against bad guys out there in the world of the Internet. But it does represent the largest line item at three hundred fifty-seven K. We just want to make sure we're keeping an eye on things. I'd like a response to why the seven K switch.
Dr. Malvi?
I was looking for a technology answer.
Do we have a technology?
May I speak, Mr. Moderator?
Go ahead. Dr. Malvi, please.
I am going to turn it over to our technology specialist, but if I may, we reviewed inside, outside, multiple options of what we felt would be the better way to go for the district. And our final judgment came down to, because I've had other inquiries relative to what Mr. Sullivan just mentioned, and even to the point of why are we going to remain with Microsoft products in terms of software programs, et cetera. A lot of things that happen now in the technology world can be downloaded free from the Internet. We could go to what's called a cloud-based environment, well beyond my capability to explain that. But we have students and staff that have been living with these units, if you will, for a number of years, and we felt that on a good day, if we were able to replace them, that not only if we replaced them, but changed the whole way of operating, no one would be able to operate it. To get into some of these newer arenas, if you will, it's going to take some time, and we certainly would be happy to review that as we go down the road. But it would take additional planning and additional training, professional development for our staff, number one, and then also to train our students because they're used to a certain environment, if you will, going in and, you know, turning their computer on on a daily basis. But with respect to the switches and the servers, et cetera, I'm going to defer to Steve Torrey. Now, keep in mind, Steve is our technology specialist. He's not the overall in-charge person, so to speak, but I will also state publicly that if we did not have the likes of Steve Torrey with us this year dealing with this issue, we probably could put up the "for sale" sign on the school district. Steve?
Now, Steve, I'm going to ask you to be brief because only about three people in here are going to understand what you're talking about, and we've been going on for a while. So address your question, please, to the switch.
Thank you, Ms. Moderator.
Mr. Sullivan raised.
Thank you, Ms. Moderator. In regards to your question, sir, about the switches that we chose, we went with a Cisco grade switch, layer-three level switching, in order to provide for a more manageable network across our district. It provided us with the best solution that the industry currently uses, what other districts around us currently use, and how the majority of high-end networking is done throughout the country at this point. So we went with the industry standard on that switch. It's a Cisco Catalyst 3500 series switch with power over Ethernet capabilities, which makes the cost come up a little bit there, as opposed to an unmanaged, unlevel switch, which was about half the cost, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
Mr. Shamath, briefly, briefly, please. We're going to come bring this to a vote.
Driving, asking students to prepare for today's age without computers is like asking you to drive a car without tires, and you wouldn't want to do that. Brief enough, Mr. Moderator?
Thank you, Mr. Shamath. All right. Sir?
I live at Two Salem Street. Mr. Moderator, apparently I'm one of the three. The district switches that we talked about, obviously answered the question. Thank you for that. There's other things that are also kind of, I don't want to say buried because that's not the right term, but they don't directly reflect the need created by the Windows XP issue. Patch panels indicate the connection point for cabling coming back. However, I don't see any cabling that needs to be upgraded from category three to say category five E. Three-foot patch cables, twenty-four hundred of them, small line item, granted at eighteen hundred dollars. However, it's eighteen hundred dollars. That could be three more workstations, which we need. I mean, nobody in this room will tell you that we need technology in the classroom more than I. Work for a major university in the city of Boston. We just upgraded all our switches as well. I work in the Network and Telecommunication Services Department. Have we looked at Juniper? Juniper switches are two-thirds the cost of Cisco. They provide the power over Ethernet. They provide forty-eight ports of power over Ethernet Plus. There's lower-cost solutions that are very, very friendly to the technology sector.
Thank you. So more suggestions. I'm sure this will be a developing plan on the technical aspect, but we appreciate that, sir. There was one over here. Yes, ma'am. Don't get too technical on me now. I'm losing you guys. Okay.
My name is, oops, my name is Sheila Grant, Thirty-Eight Paxton Road. I'm a forty-year resident of Spencer, nineteen eighty-three graduate of David Proudy High School, and a twenty-six-year teacher in the Spencer East Brookfield Regional School District. I would like to speak for a few minutes, if you may, about how these recent computer issues are affecting us on the elementary level. I never envisioned that in two thousand and fourteen, I would not have Internet access in my classroom. I never realized how I have come to rely on the Internet on a daily basis. First of all, my communication with parents and colleagues has become difficult. I can no longer email the other kindergarten teachers across the town line. We are in the process of going through NIAC accreditation, and we can't even communicate with each other. Some of us are doing our mandated NA EYC portfolios electronically, and my hands are tied not being able to use my computer. In my own building, it is hard for us to communicate amongst ourselves. Why do they not circulate hard copies of bulletins, you may ask, just like in the olden days? For years, we have been trying to save paper and toner, which is extremely expensive. Handwritten notes to my parents is much more time-consuming, and it takes me away from my students when I can easily shoot off an email while students are not in my care. Some teachers maintain blogs and websites to communicate with parents, highlight classroom happenings, and list homework assignments. They can no longer do this. Just today, a kindergartner asked me if a bald eagle was all brown. Then he asked what color the eagle's feet were. We also read a book about bears. It stated that there were eight kinds of bears in the world. We named a few, about half, but we came up short. In the past, I would have Googled the answers to these questions. A couple months ago, I was doing... A couple months ago, I was doing a KWL chart with my kindergarteners about what they knew, what they wanted to know, and at the end of the unit, what they had learned about the age age. When we got to the "What do you want to know?", one of my students asked if penguins go on planes. Kind of off-topic for you and I, but not for a five-year-old. I Googled it and found out that there was a post about penguins that were being transported by plane. They took them out on the plane and allowed them to walk down the aisles. There were photographs and everything. You should have seen the smiles on my kindergartner's faces. These are the things that children remember, and it validated my student's inquiry, and it taught five- and six-year-olds about research. As educators, we search for appropriate software and educational websites to aid instruction. One such program we have been using is Lexia, and for those of you who have children at home, you've probably heard of that. Lexia is a technology-based reading program that increases reading proficiency for all students through grade 4. I have seen my students' reading ability skyrocket compared to previous years by using it. The nifty thing about this program is it individualizes instruction, and it provides individualized instruction to the children, so that if they need more work in a certain area, they can't progress to the next level. My students loved it, and it aided them, or aided them, in what I was doing in the classroom. Our struggling learners and special needs students have been utilizing technology in addition to Lexia. This year, some teachers were trained to provide help to struggling learners using a program called Read Naturally. Their efforts have been halted. Our students no longer have access to extra math, Starfall, Raz Kids, and NASA for Kids, to name a few. Teachers are no longer able to utilize computers for workstations while they work with small groups. Assessment is also affected. MAP, Measures of Academic Progress Testing, is done on computers two or three times a year. We will not have enough computers in the lab for a class to take MAP tests. I always analyze my students' results to see where I may need to alter my instruction. I will be unable to compare my results from the January-ing test. We also use DIBELS, which is Dynamic Indicator of Basic Early Literacy Skills. Benchmark tests are given three times a year, and results are entered onto the DIBELS website. If progress monitoring is done in the classroom, those scores can also be entered, and it tracks, and it shows just how high a student needs to score over time to make their aim line to get to the benchmark. This data is useful information to adjust instruction. We cannot do that either if we cannot get on the Internet. Teachers are always researching topics, looking up units and lesson planning ideas. Many of us design our own worksheets and learning activities, and rely heavily on online clip art. It is much more meaningful for concept development to be able to illustrate a word with a picture, for instance. Having the computers in our classrooms with Internet hookups makes for more efficient teaching. We all know that there were warnings that this would happen, we all know that the district didn't quite prepare for it, we all know that there have been multiple changes in command in recent years, thus leading to our computers being rendered virtually, no pun intended, inactive. I don't care about that, I care about what is happening now, and how can we make this better? In an age when districts are equipping their students with iPads, even at the kindergarten and first-grade level, we are not asking for that. While many schools have smart boards or ENOS in every classroom to enhance instruction, we are not asking for that. We are asking for basic computer access for our students, and we need your support. Thank you for your time.
Jonathan Stair, 35 Cherry Street. I guess most of what I was wondering has been covered, but on April 8, you had a whole bunch of computers that stopped working because of Windows XP. You had a bunch of computers on April 8 that stopped working because of Windows XP. Why can't those computers just be removed and new computers plugged in right where they were? And we don't need servers, switches, none of these things ran on XP. So, couldn't we just replace the computers, develop the plan that we need, and then spend our money more wisely, maybe Juniper network equipment? That's all.
Briefly, please, Dr. Malvi, we're going to bring this to a question, to a vote.
The shot answer to it is, from the computers that we had, mind you, they're very, very old. Some of them go back to 2000, 2002. So, they have limited capacity, even with an upgrade, and that was the 245. When we get into the next range of $100,000 that the committee has authorized, that will give us anywhere from 70 to 80 brand-new computers, Windows Operating System 8.1, correct me, Steve? They'll be camera-ready, set up, plugged in, we're off and running. But as we build that system, our existing servers, switches, patch panels, and whatnot can't handle the new load? So, am I saying that right, Steve? So, we have to upgrade those, because it won't take that capacity. Is that okay? All right. He taught me well.
We ready for the vote? All right. It's a majority vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. Those that are opposed, the ayes have it, thank you. Article 21, motion I have is to waive the reading and approve Article 1 as printed in a warrant. Article 21 involves the sale of about 2,300 square feet of town land, being a portion of the highway garage land, to the adjacent diner for value after appraisal. Requires a 2/3 vote. Motion is by Mr. Woodbury, seconded by Mr. Bertheum. Finance Committee, please.
Finance Committee unanimously recommends approval of this article as written.
Thank you. Mr. Woodbury?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This is a strip of land between the Highway Bond and Charlie's Diner. We're having an appraise to negotiate its value and to sell that piece of property. This authorizes us to do it.
Questions? All right, all those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. Those that are opposed? I see none opposed, I would declare that a unanimous vote in favor. Article 22 and Article 23 will conclude the meeting. These two articles both relate to pilot agreements. These are payments in lieu of taxes. They both relate to proposed solar farms, one of them being on Treadwell Drive and the other being at the Spencer Abbey. Dealing with Article 22, the motion I have, and I have to read this to you, because it varies from what is in your warrant, I move that the town vote in accordance with Mass. General Law's Chapter 59, Section 38H, to authorize the Board of Selectmen to enter into a tax agreement with Old Wardour Solar LLC for a period of 20 years, and to approve said agreement, under which Old Wardour Solar LLC will pay the town a sum of money relative to a set annual value of the proposed construction and operation of a solar photovoltaic power plant, with an expected nameplate capacity of approximately 2.5 megawatts, located on a parcel of land totaling 28.6 acres, located at 22 Treadwell Drive Spencer. Motion is by Mr. Bertheum, seconded by Mr. Fritz. Requires a majority vote. Finance Committee, please.
Finance Committee unanimously recommends approval of this article as written.
Mr. Bertheum?
Pilot agreements, we signed one with Wilson Farm on Wilson Street. Basically, it's a contract that allows you to, you know, front-load the contract, to back-load the contract for a certain amount of time, and then after that time, you renegotiate. Something the state allows to happen on certain things, and solar farms is one of them. I believe the drafts are down in the assessor's office, they haven't been signed yet, if anybody needs to take a look at them.
As a point of information, I can tell you that these agreements are valid only if the project is built out, obviously. I believe that in the past, the town has signed nine of these agreements, and only one or two have come to fruition so far. Any questions or comments on this? All right, majority vote, all those in favor? Thank you. Those opposed? Thank you. The ayes have it. Article 23, same situation, a pilot agreement on St. Joseph's Abbey. The motion is as follows: I move that the town vote in accordance with Mass. General Law's Chapter 59, Section 39H, to authorize the Board of Selectmen to enter into a tax agreement with Solterra LLC for a period of 20 years, and to approve said agreement, under which Solterra LLC will pay the town a sum of money relative to a set annual value of the proposed construction and operation of a solar photovoltaic power plant, with an expected nameplate capacity of approximately 17.5 megabyte-megawatts, located on a parcel of land totaling 100 acres, more or less, located at Alta Cross Road, St. Joseph's Abbey, Spencer. Motion by Mr. Bertheum, seconded by Mr. Fritz. Requires a majority vote. Finance Committee, please.
Finance Committee unanimously recommends approval of this article as written.
Thank you. Mr. Bertheum, any comments? No? Any questions? All right, all those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. Those opposed? The ayes have it. Chair will entertain a motion to dissolve the meeting by Mr. Shamath, seconded by Mr. Nordquist. All those in favor? Opposed? Thank you, and good night.